Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday the 3rd and we're at Appleseed Restaurant for a regular school meeting. Could everybody please stand and say my name is...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To read our statement, "The school committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a recent assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster." Before we start our open forum, I just want to remind folks that if anybody is planning to report or videotape any portion of this meeting, they need to identify themselves at this time. Having said that, we'll do the open forum. If anybody would like to address the committee, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please. Again, would anybody like to address the committee? Please come forward. And one final last time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward at this time. Having no one coming forward, we'll close this portion of our meeting and we're going to move on to communications superintendent?
Yes, we have one this evening and it is from John Brackett, who was my coach through the 2018-2019 superintendent induction program this year. And he felt it was important to reach out to the committee so you understand this three year commitment. This year was quite time-consuming, eight course days, six hours, minimally a month of coaching, in district and out of district. So he just wanted to make sure that you were aware of my progress in the program.
Great, thank you Superintendent. Now your report?
So we have to go there. The graduation ceremonies that happened in Leominster last week were remarkable. Between LCE on Thursday, LHS and CTI on the field Saturday, that were so well-attended. The stands were full, our students were so proud and gracious. I want to thank everyone who participated in making the day special and for the committee, so many of you showing up to show our support. As Mrs. Griffin and I both shook over 460 hands.
Yep.
Yes, we noticed, we saw the pride of students who were going off to colleges and careers and quite a few of our students going into the military who had their scarves. So, thank you to everyone for making it such a special celebration for all of our seniors. And now we just want them all to behave while they're out there. Today was an exceptional professional development. We did a virtual televised professional development. We connected all of our schools with central office staff to bring back to the forefront our initiative on SEL. We had met virtually in October and we had set goals and we held staff accountable for what they said they were going to do and we discussed challenges, opportunities, and successes. Because even though you think the work is done, truly we've just begun. And the efforts that were displayed today, there were musicals, there were shows and costumes at times, but it was a really nice way to bring the district together just shy of closing up for the summer. And lastly, just a reminder for families that June 14th is the last day of school and it is a half-day for staff and students. So any outstanding debts, assignments, that last push before finals, we would truly appreciate families getting involved with students so that we end this school year seamlessly. Thank you.
And getting their library books back in and things like that.
Everything, all materials, please.
Absolutely. Great, we're going to move on to presentations. We've got the curriculum and summer school overview.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Yep. I believe that Paula has put in front of you a one-pager. Those of you who know us, we're very bullet-oriented, so we've tried to keep this as concise as possible and certainly would welcome any questions either as we go along or after we've completed this work. Paula had asked us if we would just sit down as a team and go through some of the work that we had done this year. We first decided to come up with a theme and our theme was capacity and collaboration for this year. So, there's been a lot of that going on and I think that the three of us will take a little bit of your time and share some of this information with you. The first piece that we just wanted to remind us all of is that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does have a new accountability system. So we have spent a good amount of time this year, both at the district level and then at each of the schools, supporting our administration and our staff. They are more comfortable with what the targets are for our schools, for our students, and hopefully for what we will be expecting this summer when the new accountability information comes out. One of the pieces that all of the buildings took on this year was the chronic absenteeism, which is a new target for us all. And I must say, we've been keeping track of that all year. And as of May, every one of our schools has decreased the percent of chronically absent students. So it's nice that we know when in fact our buildings, our teachers, our administrators really pay attention to something that they can have good positive results from that. The next piece that we were going to talk about are some of the technical assistance, grants, opportunities and such that we have taken advantage of from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the John Hopkins survey that had gone out today. Our staff participated K through 12 in a curriculum for ELA and math survey. So we're excited to see what the results of that will be and some of the recommendations moving forward. We also have handed over all our curriculum guides in 6 through 12, syllabus, book lists and all that to them, so they're going to be looking at that to see where our strengths are, where our weaknesses might be and what suggestions and recommendations they can put forth that we can discuss with our staff and collaborate with. We also took part in an ELA tech study, grade 6 through 8. And they did two different tech studies, one in grade 7 and one in grade 8 for immigration. In grade 7 was the bold actions. And this is both schools, Sammaset and Skyview collaborating together around tech sets are just gathering a variety of sources for them to successfully implement that topic so that all students would be able to access the information that's given in their scanners that are given. So they've done a nice job with that and they're going to present that to us through the Google Drive, which is nice.
Another program that the department that gave us a small grant to work on was to implement our new history and social science curriculum frameworks. We've had teachers in grades K through 12 who've been working all spring to put together a document and resources that will then be given out to all of our staff. Next year, we are going to be starting with a rollout of a changeover in all of the grades so that by the 2021 year, we will have each grade aligned with the state in their curriculum frameworks. So we've had some great teachers doing work with that. They're really excited to actually put history and social science back up there with our other content areas and to have a voice in what we'll be working on. We've also had some money that we've put into next year's budget to provide them with some resources at specific grade levels that are dealing with civics because that is new at our 8th grade and also a push at our 5th grade. Leominster has been part of what the state is calling a 9 to 16 pathway in mathematics. So we've been meeting with representatives of higher education as well as DESI and our department head, Colby Mazafaro, and a couple of our other math teachers here at the high school to have an alignment for success in different pathways from 9th grade all the way through graduating from college. So we're continuing to work on that. We met three times this year with a variety of stakeholders. And then Renee and I have been part of a variety of support groups that the department has. So they were urban liaison meetings in the past, now they've opened them up to all of the districts. But they have science, ELA, mathematics, and I think probably soon to be social studies meetings. So we do attend those meetings, one of us will go to each one. They happen at least quarterly and then that gives us a heads-up to any grants that might be coming out, any new programs at the state that DESI might be putting forward so that we can bring them back and be ready to take advantage of them.
It's nice collaboration too with other districts, which I found useful when I first started, so I enjoyed that.
We jumped in and we are still working on some great partnerships with Mount Wachusett and Pittsburgh State College, anything that was in place. Gina Warden was very much involved with those in the past, so Renee and I are doing our very best to keep up with that. But a couple of...
No Gina, I'm not going to say that, but we're trying.
Yeah, so Renee has been very much involved with United Way Youth Ventures that are taking place at the elementary, middle and high school. And I have been working with the Changemaker Program that's at our middle and high schools. Those are both partnerships with Mount Wachusett. And Renee has also been involved with Pittsburgh State College specifically with the accreditation of their ed programs issues on that committee with them. We've had a great year also with our administration. Paula brings the building-level principals together very often and Jim Riley has mirrored that with the Unit B or Assistant Principals and other directors. So they meet, if the principals meet on a Tuesday, Jim will have the same agenda for Thursdays. That's really worked at building a lot of capacity and collaboration. One of the things that we've put out there was a book study. I'm the book study queen. But we had a book called High Expectation Teaching that was written by John Saffia. He's part of the RBT or Research for Better Teaching that we've been working with for many years. We've done that book study with the entire administration, really working towards having common understanding about what we're looking for in the classroom and how we can support teachers through observation and evaluation. We're going to bring John Saffia out for one day of our administrative retreat in August to help us move forward with that very theme on what we can do to really frame our observations to be supportive of teachers.
So some of the things we worked on a little bit this year were procedures and protocols around Title I and English Language Learners Program and our professional resource network staff. It was been a meeting with them on a monthly basis around just collaborating, make sure that things are happening within the buildings are the same or similar, that collecting on what is happening at each building so that if something's good that's happening at one of the buildings, we can make sure that it's happening at another building also or other buildings so that we try to make sure that we're all kind of, not even Steven, but having that option to have that piece if we wanted to. Our ELL learner program has, we had a consultant come out three times this year where Paula and I walked around with the consultant and she came back at the end of this week to talk about more of the Psyop model with our teachers. So our teachers were able to see her model lessons, but able to also have reflection and feedback from her as well each time she came out, which was a nice addition for our ELL staff. And then we also had our PRNs where some of our PRNs have established collaboration goals around things happening at all the buildings. And one thing that they definitely were proud of is that the K through 8th grade PRNs have come up with a writing prompt around the last two that we did during the last end of the year, but make sure they already had the schedule for the four prompts so that and then move those prompts up as they go and then make sure that each school, each grade level has a example of writing as they move to the next grade level. So, you know, collaboration between schools and each other in sharing their ideas has been one of our main things with those programs. And then I'm up for summer programming, so I've made once again a lovely schedule of what's happening in all our schools. All our schools are hopping once again this summer. We have a huge amount of students who are attending. We do have our Getting Ready for Kindergarten program again and our summer academy for grades 1 to 3 this year. We have our partnership with Pittsburgh State with a meeting specialist who will be coming and joining us for their part of the transition, so that's great. We do have preschool and special ed K through 5 in the buildings at Francis Drake and preschool will be at Sammaset the first three, four weeks with a week break. We did get some funding for Starbase Academy, so we're going to be working on posting that. It just came through in the end of last week, so we have a posting up for that, so hopefully our ELL students will be able to once again enjoy a Starbase program for a week. Our special ed's going to be at the high school. What we did a little bit with working with the bus company is kind of mainstream our programs, so a lot of our programs are at Francis Drake and Northwest and at the high school and it's due to busing, so all students have opportunity to have a bus instead of certain programs, only busing certain programs. The one big thing that I think that we're proud of, that Bob Burr is going to be opening up the cafeteria at the high school for breakfast and lunch for any student who wants to come. It doesn't mean they have to participate in our program. They can come in through the collect hall and they can have breakfast and lunch, which is a huge thing and he's going to post that and we're going to get that out by contact end. So that was a big thing that he's kind of proud of himself, I think it's a help of our city too, for some of the people who don't have that participation or aren't able to attend.
So it's any grade?
Any grade.
That's wonderful.
Yeah. And then the high school, we are doing something a little different this year. We're doing the credit recovery with middle school and high school together using the continuity and Steve McCaughy is going to be running that program. So I think that we were able to build syllabus around the different levels of middle school and high school, which I'll send the brochure out once we get it translated. You guys can look at the brochure of the different subject areas. But we're excited because it's not unmandated, I have to be here at 8 to 10, 10:30 to 12 type of thing. There are a lot of do it online and it's, they can do it at home, even though we're still encouraging them to come and use our resources and teachers on staff. But we already have a lot of parents who said, "This is great because we go on vacation, we already bought plane tickets, I'll sign them up and make sure you get the four hours in." So we think this is another way of disengaging our students and making sure that they do get the necessary curriculum before moving on to the next grade level. So we're excited about that. And then the last page is just the other programs that are non-academic, banned, summer scene, rec department, and creative choices.
A lot going on.
There is a lot going on, yes. Oh yeah, it's about 1,200, depending on how many kids.
Yeah, I did a quick, unscientific counting. Trying to multitask.
Renee?
Yes.
I'd like to ask you about the program at the high school, the credit recovery and continuity.
Yes.
How is that, have you made it comparable to what it would be, because most of these are classes that they didn't pass?
Right.
And that was basically a full-year class.
Mm-hmm.
Is, how are you making it comparable?
For 40 hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just like we basically always have, we look at a syllabus and figure out the most important skills that they need. So Steve McCaughy's done a lot, knowing how to build those syllabus for them. And along the way, they can't move on until they pass certain things. So this is, it's a pre-assessment, they start off, they go and they assess on each standard and they move as they pass. So we know they just can't do, put on a computer and say 40 hours, sit there and wait. They have to complete certain areas and it keeps moving them to the next level.
What if it's a child that just can't do computer work?
Mm-hmm. So I think there's a benefit around some of that piece because we do have teachers who are certified, it's going to be at the building, they're there from 8 to 12 and they can either get on a bus or they can be dropped off and they can stay there all four hours, they can go have breakfast and lunch. So I think that that's what Steve's going to, you know, make sure that he is, when talking and when during registration, that these parents know that there's support for these students. So there's a special ed, each subject area content is available for any student for help on that piece, so hopefully they'll use that. And then also these teachers have caseloads where it does say a student hasn't gotten on for a couple of days, they're going to make the phone call or send a quick email out saying, "Oop, we haven't seen Charlie on, is there a problem, do you need help? Come on in, give me a phone call." So they'll have those kind of things, that outreach too, which is going to be, I think, nice for kids to say, "Oh, someone actually has kids that are not doing it and stuff."
Good, good. Okay, thank you. Sue?
Sorry. Is there a cost associated with some of these offerings?
Yes, for the cost for the credit recovery only.
Just for the credit recovery? And are we opening it to other students?
Oh yeah, I've already gotten a couple of phone calls from them already, they always definitely participate in that and same with...
So is the cost the same to it in district?
It is the same, depending on, so if a student is reduced free lunch at that wherever they attend, they still pay the fee, but otherwise it's the $200.
It's $200 for our out-of-district, so some of it's not from Leominster, it's $200. If they're a Leominster resident, it's $180. And if our students are free or reduced lunch, then it's $100 per course. And they can take two courses.
Anybody else have any questions before we move on? Okay, Steve's waiting patiently.
Yes. As everyone else is, I'm sure. So I tried to break up the little discussion I'm going to have on the technology and digital learning piece and I broke up into three areas, the stabilization of services, ongoing productivity, and an investment in the future. And I think the stabilization of services, the need there was pretty evident, you know, the department had undergone some struggles over the past year and so that was the first thing that we tried to do. In that, I worked with human resources, Jim and Paula to secure a little bit more in-school onsite support. So we went from four building-based techs to six. And so that's a good number, not every school has a full-time FTE, but I think the resources are spread throughout the district in a fair way. And we also pooled together, so if there's a project going on at the high school, we all came here. For example, MCAS, we're testing 450 students, Maltech, myself, Ryan, and the six in-school staff were here to support the students and teachers, quick example. Another thing that we did to stabilize was get the Destiny Library software up and running. Huge endeavor, but successfully did that. A lot of hard work from our librarians in the schools to get that back up and running. Built successful protocols for backup systems. Even with our difficulties, that was not an area of strength for us. Now we are being backed up, our core systems are being backed up and I'm very happy about that. And then the managed IT services, and I think that is really a backbone of our department in that it allows us to have a presence in the schools, take care of the things that we're able to, but then handle a lot of things that we might not have the expertise or the experience to. And what that will do is allow, hopefully myself, to work more in the curriculum and instruction area, the teaching and learning. Thank you.
Can't wait.
So that's the plan for stability. And the managed IT services, we're currently reviewing proposals for a new company to start on July 1st, or the selected company to start on July 1st. Okay, the productivity, I think we've really done some things that even surprised me. The first was how quickly we converted to Gmail. That was a district-wide initiative that I think did a lot to help our stability in terms of our vulnerabilities around email and viruses and those kinds of things. So that was huge. We've also implemented G Suite and our teachers have taken that ball and ran with it, central office. We have team drives across the district, we have docs going, video chat, so there's a lot there and we're proud of that. Also, though, the productivity, teachers have started the year with their individual professional development plan, so what they needed to work on. And so that has been productive and teachers and principals discussed those during the summative evaluation meetings, or the formative, summative or formative evaluation meetings that happened in the past month. And then finally, we did two MCAs. We met the state requirement to test all of our students in grades 3 through 10 and that's approximately 3,800 students tested electronically for MCAs. And that was a huge endeavor and staff, teachers and students should really take a bow on that one. That was impressive. And we had a lot of support from school committee and from the city and the mayor in terms of letting that happen. It was leading into the investment for the future, right? So we can't stop, but you know, I've spoken before that I'm not somebody that will just buy new technologies just for that purpose. So we have a plan, and I spoke to you about that before, about our one-to-one initiative and so we'll see that grow along with some training. So this past year, we increased our phone books alone by 630 devices. And so students have great access, teachers have the ability to sign them out by carts, by tubs of five, and so that has been working very well. And then the last thing is our phone system. And so the phone system is on the capital improvement list and I would consider that an investment in the future. And so we've secured, we're moving forward with Gallagher and high school for the coming school year and we're in the process of planning for that currently. And that's, so those two sites because that's where the backbone of the system will be. And so I'm working closely again with the mayor as well as the procurement departments in City Hall and we'll have that up and running for the start of the school year. So, busy.
What's going on? Does anybody have any questions for Steve or anybody else? Mike?
Do you, how many, do we have computers still running older versions of Windows, do you know, and how many?
We do. How many is a lot, right? So I don't have a number off the top of my head, but the plan is, so the Windows 7 machines are going to be able to run Windows 7 after January and so we need to upgrade those to Windows 10. So I've been working with our current IT department, IT company that we're working with. And so we have a plan in place. Right now, they're in the process of building an image. The last two days, two gentlemen were here on-site and were successfully working on the lab. So the plan that they came up with is working, they tried it out. So the next step will be to duplicate that, take that image and start. So, I don't know if that works for the year over the summer and then maybe, I'm thinking a little bit more in the fall.
So the expectation is all the machines that are running 7 will be able to be upgraded to 10?
Yes.
Do we have any that are running anything older than 7?
I'm not positive. There were some that were trying to be rebuilt and we had volunteer working on that on Peter and not as successful. So some of that is a time-plus analysis, right? How much time and then how effective is that machine going to be running that? So we're doing the ones that we know will work and then we're trying to backfill with new devices, whether they're Chromebooks or PCs.
I'm concerned with the extent of the threat to machines older than Windows 7.
Yeah.
I think it's important that any of those exist, we get rid of them.
Yeah, so we talked about that.
Or upgrade them or whatever.
We did talk about that, I talked about that with retrofit. We have a good plan and if they're not able to be, they're advising that same thing. And so part of the big... And so part of the big, part of the RFP included virus management, malware management. So that's all part of the plan starting June, July 1st. And part of the RFP, which goes along with that, is projects and consulting. So some of the hours, it's not just onsite, kind of fixing things, which is what we've been doing with our managed IT for the past two companies. But part of it is consulting, project planning, and so helping me to identify and plan for the future. So I'm excited about that piece as much as I am the fact that they want to also fix things.
Anybody else? Great, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming here for us. All right, we're gonna move on to school committee self-evaluation documents. So those are in our packet here. So this is something that we need to do every year. And ideally, I would like folks to look at this and have us back to me at the next school committee meeting, or maybe the Friday before the next school committee meeting, so that we can go over it that day. Does everyone think that they'd be able to do that? It's fairly quick. So it shouldn't take very much time.
Chris, is this, how do you have this evaluation thing saved as a PDF or?
I don't know. I can check.
Yeah.
Have you seen it, like, in Word?
Either in Word or...
If I had it in Word, you can actually convert it if you download it and pick it?
Because I had to double the time with the evaluation.
A lot of people were struggling with that.
My computer wasn't good.
Come and see me, and I can show you how to do that piece. But if I only have it in a document, then it is a PDF.
I might have it in this.
This goes that way.
This is the same that we are using. It's the MASC.
You must have it, because...
I must have it.
Because that's all we have.
Okay. So I'll send it to you.
So folks can do that, because it is important for us to just sort of gauge, you know, where we are at as a committee. We, you know, hold the superintendent accountable. We want to hold ourselves accountable as well. And while we're talking about evaluations, I am still owed one, two, three, like, four people's, five people's evaluations. So if everyone can get that to me as soon as possible. And when we get to older new business, Sue Isbell, you and the three of us will come up with a date to go over all the evaluations.
Okay. We do have a set for the 10th of June.
Oh, we did. Okay.
I just don't know if that's still...
Is that Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. It's probably Monday. I just didn't look. Okay. That's fine. But there's other people that are on the committee that have in hands of theirs. So we really do want to hear from everyone, otherwise we'll proceed without your feedback. But it is important, because we are evaluating the superintendent and any financial... I'm not even saying the word right.
Compensation.
Thank you. Compensation is a better word. We'll come out of that evaluation as well. So it is important that everyone participates. All right, moving on, we have approval of the minutes. Isabelle, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the school committee minutes for May 21st.
Do I have a second? Anybody have any omissions, errors, corrections? All right, I have a first and a second. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Please approve the finance subcommittee minutes of April 9th.
And you're making a motion to do that? And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any omissions, errors, corrections? Jeez, Chris, you're batting a hundred today.
I'm good.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Then we will go to the finance subcommittee. You had a meeting tonight?
We have some warrants to approve. Are you ready now, or are you looking to do this?
I'd like to recommend the following warrants for approval. From the general fund, warrant 45 for $2,512,124.62. Warrant 46 for $304,432.01. Warrant 47, $2,284,977.55. And from the grant and revolving funds, warrant 45 for $341,278.54. Warrant 46 for $273,128.07. And warrant 47 for $514,107.26.
All right, all those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
We have one other thing that we...
You're talking about the other things and the action items. Do you want to take the other finance things now, or will we get to them in part five?
I'm pretty flexible. Do you want to just go for it?
All right. We had two other things we voted on. There was a request to approve a capital appropriation from the city. The amount, well, the anticipated amount is $19,715 to replace the failed HVAC unit in the middle of Northwest School. We have a request. We have an estimate. Wouldn't the general fund be requesting appropriation of the city capital?
So you're making a motion?
I'm making a motion that we request.
And do I have a second? Any thoughts or discussion before we... All right, having none, all those in favor? And motion carries. That's something that is definitely needed, but something that we knew was coming.
Yeah, they've been handed all together, and it's passed that...
Yeah. And it's been for some time.
The second thing, we have a request to spend some money from the Kendall Fund for some online access and textbooks for the high school. We have a letter from Principal Douglas Stewart.
It's here. Yes, here.
We did have one question, because your first paragraph and your last sentence don't quite match up.
You'd like to cut forward, so we could address that?
I had the first paragraph to say we need the statistics textbooks and the amount of $7,178.15. And you needed the online access for geometry and Algebra I text. But your final sentence only mentions the Algebra I, not geometry.
We would like to add geometry to that sentence.
Assume that was probably what you meant. So if I read the documents correctly, each of the two online accesses is 280. So that adds five, six, you're correct. So the request is $7,738.15 from the Kendall Fund. The online access we have is about to expire, so it needs to be corrected.
Okay.
So we recommend that you approve.
Okay, so you're making a motion to approve. No second. No second. Any questions for Steve? All right, all those in favor? And motion carries. Thank you. Coming back, Steve. Excellent, we appreciate it. All right, anything else happen in finance subcommittee that we need to be updated? Okay.
That was it.
Perfect. We had a policy subcommittee, Isabelle. Would you like to give a...
Yeah, we had a first reading on the booster club policy, and we voted to approve that policy. So we have that in the item as well.
Right, so why don't we take care of it now?
Yeah, that's fine. So I make a motion to approve the booster club policy. KJAA.
Do I have a second, Ron? Anybody have any thoughts or comments? Nona?
I don't have a problem with the policy. I think we needed this policy. I'm surprised we hadn't had one before this. I do have some concerns with the latter part of this on...
The umbrella?
The umbrella situation. And I'm concerned with several things in it. And one of the things that had disturbed me was that there was a memo that went to the different organizations back in April. And in the memo, the way I read it, it led people to believe that the school committee was in favor of this umbrella, you know, recommendation. And I'm disturbed that our name is being used when we hadn't approved of anything. No one, not anybody on this committee, can speak for everybody else and says the committee is in favor of something. I mean, you can say, "I am speaking just for myself," that's one thing. But you cannot speak for the committee. And whether somebody did that or not, I don't know. But I was very disturbed that our name was being used in the manner of letting people believe that we were in favor of something when it hadn't even been brought before us. Plus, as I said, I have a bunch of questions about this umbrella thing that I would want answered before I could vote on something like that.
So we, in our policy subcommittee, we made it clear that the only thing before us was the policy. And we don't oversee or have anything to do with the booster clubs other than through this policy, they would be bringing them forward to us twice a year, wanting to recognize them and kind of certify that they're a legitimate booster club. And that is not only pertaining to athletics, but any booster club for any of the things, whether it's banned or whatever else may be existing. And then for them to sort of come back to us towards the end of the year to let us know fiscally what they've done. But we don't have any oversight to the booster club. And to my knowledge, I mean, I don't know if anybody said anything, but to my knowledge, this is not something that's been coming from the school committee at all.
Right, but our name was being used in a memo that we were approving this when it hadn't been brought.
Right, which we were...
And I understand that we don't have, I mean, they can put together what type of committee they want to put together. I mean, I have some concerns about it. I just don't like our name being used when it shouldn't have been.
Sure. I think we can all agree on that. Anybody have any other thoughts about the policy?
Was that discussed at the athletic advisory?
Was what discussed? A letter that went out? Or athletic advisory? No.
Should it have been?
Probably. I mean, we do need to have another, we haven't had an athletic advisory meeting since this...
So, yeah, I think you should, or you should, or whatever. You're the rep, right?
Right.
And then, you know, give us feedback from, you know, to...
I think this is being orchestrated outside of Barton. Is it counts personally? I don't know. But in any state, the policy is before us, and we have a first and a second?
I just have a question. Just so I know, since these are, the boosters are currently organized as separate organizations, right?
There's only four registered booster clubs with, like, a 501...
I'm just curious, to what extent do we have authority over them?
None.
So we can formulate a policy that specifies what they have to do for us to recognize them?
What they do with their monies and everything else is up to them.
So they would be...
We can dictate to them.
No. And we would be, and they, because there was a number of people representing two of those booster clubs, and they are working on bylaws and things like that to incorporate. So the hope, I think, in general, from what I understand, is that it'll certainly help other sports who don't have the same access to fundraising. They might be smaller, you know, golf, tennis compared to football, you know, with a different kind of following. And that there would be some joint fundraisers that would benefit all athletic endeavors. Well, no, that is specifically for athletics. It does not have anything to do with, say, the banned booster being separate.
It's just a way to spread the wealth amongst other sports teams.
And, you know, you might have one parent who can get involved and do something, but they couldn't do it for an entire sports team because they don't have the backing.
I like the idea of it. There's just some concerns I have with that umbrella thing. You know, I would, whoever is organizing this, I would recommend to them that they include on their list of what they sent us on the organization of it, that they would have a member from every sport on it, on the committee, versus just football and baseball or...
Right. Football and hockey. I think we expressed the same concerns that you did.
Especially regarding female sports.
Female sports, which are not have any booster clubs at this point.
It also had no representation in our policy subcommittee.
And we were also talking about how some of this has come to light, and coaches may have been advised of this. But for any sports that's out of season, none of those parents have any idea about any of this that's going on, because there's not, like, a team meeting or anything to reach out to them. So there's a lot of, we express a lot of concerns around making it accessible to everybody, making sure that everybody was represented, et cetera.
There's standard...
Yeah, it's not...
And then again, there's another email that went out that was included in our packet that made it sound like we've already voted on this.
So...
You know, I have a tough time with stuff being sent out ahead of time, representing us. And, you know, and instructing people possibly to closing up their shop and moving their funds to the new booster club, when that hasn't been formed and...
Right, so nobody's moving any funds until after.
Like you have a memo that said, just...
The memo doesn't treat as a request or treat as an order. It's just that you have to understand...
Hey!
Right, right.
No, I know.
You have to understand, Nona, it's a work in process that basically, because the state has gained them to get this done. And if it doesn't get done, the state's gonna come down.
I understand it.
That's why they went with mass. So maybe they misspoke. I don't know. I didn't read the emails, but at the policy we had tonight, it was a lot of rich dialogue, right?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah.
And we basically...
Oh, I know we have to do, I'm in favor of doing this.
No, no, it's just that...
But I don't like the fact that ahead of time, they used our name when we had voted on it.
Somebody probably stepped up ahead of us. Why, I don't know.
And that's sort of what the issue was too, about the booster clubs are now raising funds in our name, and we have nothing to do with them at all. We also talked about liability insurance.
Right, and for people to understand that if the booster clubs have a function and something happens at that function, some people think, some people think that they're under our insurance.
Insurance.
And they're not.
Exactly. We did discuss that today specifically. Absolutely. So we have a motion and a second for what we have in, which is the policy.
And the first reading.
And the first reading. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And motion carries. And so we will obviously be filing this up. But at this point, it's still a work in progress, and there's nothing that's been completed as of yet. I just ask a question. Is this our Title IX lawsuit?
Is this our Title IX lawsuit, is this kind of a byproduct of that?
Where do we begin with that?
It's still quiet. Okay, but I mean, are there recommendations?
I think this will help solve them.
This will help utilize the field, not only for women's sports, but certainly because they're not represented at all, but any of the sports that have less participation due to the configuration of that sport. So. So, it's to give everybody fair, equal, some equity into all the sports. And they, it's also talked about a scholarship thing, things like that. And it's sort of modeled after sort of the LEF foundation, how that is organized. So, there's sort of the umbrella and then there's a couple of different line items. So, the individual sports would have control over how they decide to utilize their funding. But there would be a way and an avenue for everyone to get a piece of the pie on certain activities, not every activity.
And I think also.
And scholarships and things like that.
I, I look at it as also their, it will safeguard any, it will make it all transparent on what, what groups fundraise and where their money is going.
Right, because there needs to be some accounting of that. And at this point, there isn't, and they're still using Lomster High School. And this will also move middle school sports, which there's been no attention to, you know, for that piece, so I think that'll be very helpful. So, I think it's moving in a direction which is not where we need to be yet.
The caveat and all this.
It should be very positive.
The caveat in all this is being very mindful, not promoting, don't. That's my biggest fear.
Well, I think they're also talking about, you know, opening this up to, like, community members could, you know, part of the alumni, other, you know, stakeholders can be involved, you know, in this sort of.
Proceeding corporate funding.
Absolutely, I think it's.
Yeah.
All right, and then, at this point, we need to vote on the caps and flag representatives. So, thus far, Sue, you are the representative, I get confused at which one.
Caps.
And superintendent is flag. Do we want to continue that or appoint someone new? Sue, are you interested in continuing?
Sure.
And superintendent, are you interested in continuing?
Yes.
But she got voted.
I left a meeting early and all of a sudden I became the vice chair.
So, you're not getting.
I know.
You're not getting out of it.
No, no.
All right, so can I have a motion to accept Sue and superintendent? Can I do a second?
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
We should do them separate, right? Though, only because we have to send them separate.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, for caps for Sue, we'll have this.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Caps for Sue, we have Mike and Nona, and everybody in favor. And then, flag for Paula, so moved, everyone in favor? Excellent, thank you. And thank you both for doing that. I know that's extra commitments and we appreciate your involvement. So, we need to vote on the renewal of the Chartwell's contract. If I can have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Chartwell's contract. Is that for one year?
Yeah, one year.
Just one year or? One year to ten. Is it? Okay.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Motion carries. We already voted on the capital appropriation and we already voted on the booster club policy. Does anybody have any new or old business?
Just want to comment that I attended the awards ceremony Thursday night, it was excellent. I cannot believe how many students, first, got awards, and second, either were wearing honor cords or they're callers for the National Honor Society. It was quite impressive. My compliments to Steve for a well-run program. And we gave over, correct me if I'm wrong.
Two hundred forty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five thousand.
Almost a quarter of a million dollars.
It's awesome.
That is terrific, that is absolutely terrific. And also, I attended the Courage Project that San Jacinto hosted last week. That was impressive, very impressive, very moving to see how these students took, whether it was about Rosa Parks or whether it was about sports, a sports figure, or some other figure or an activity or whatever, and made a display of what they were, what they deemed as courage. And it was really, and it was well-attended. And of course, graduation, what a beautiful day.
It was gorgeous. And LCE graduation was very nice.
Absolutely.
Indoors, but that was very.
Very nice.
Personal.
And well-attended.
And well-attended. Many of us were there for both events, so those are great things to be proud of. And congratulations to all those seniors who graduated. All right, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, there's an award, undergraduate awards night Thursday.
Thursday night, yeah.
Thursday night at, at seven o'clock.
Right. And that's here, Steve? In the auditorium, right?
Right.
They do the E-bug.
Yes, they did. Got it today. Awesome, anything else going on? All right, we appreciated everyone coming. I need a motion to adjourn. There's no executive session.
There is a summer stroll.
The summer stroll is Saturday from three to seven downtown Lomster. Hopefully, everyone can attend.
Be there, be squared.
And the fifteenth is Starburst.
Is Starburst, another great event. So, we had a first by Sue, and we have a second. Thank you very much, all those in favor? Motion, beating adjourned, thank you.